So just to give everybody an update, we have a quorum of over 100 at this point. We have for a few minutes now, but there is a long line outside. So to be respectful of the people that are in line, we're not going to actually start the meeting right now. But what I would like to do, if everybody has a warrant, then they'll see that in the first page of the warrant, there are two informational presentations that are being allowed this evening. So I'd like to take a few minutes to allow our presenters to just explain and tell everybody what it is that they're here to talk about. So the first presentation is the Tricentennial Committee update, and the speakers are Dave Clifton and Dale Carister. So I'd like to invite them forward.
Thank you very much, Town Moderator Kate Welch. It certainly, I'd like to say good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and good evening, Town Meeting members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak about our tricentennial celebration, and it's scheduled for 2025. Not only do I have a chance this evening to speak to the folks that are present here at the Town Meeting, but I also have the opportunity to speak to the folks that may be watching on ECAT, Eastern Community Access Television. I'm Dave Clifton. I'm a resident at Four Lamplighter Lane and Southeastern. It's indeed my honor and privilege to serve also as the Chair of the Tricentennial Committee and to work with so many talented and dedicated volunteers. It wasn't too long ago, and to be exact, it was December of 2022, the Eastern Select Board appointed 10 members to serve on the Tricentennial Committee. I remember that date so clearly, and it was in early 2023 that we had our first meeting at the Queeset House. It was a snowy night, and at that meeting, the 10 of us got together, and some of the questions that came up, what are we going to do? When do we start? How are we going to raise the funds? How are we going to promote this celebration? How are we going to get people to come together? And I think that's our theme that we're very proud of. It's bringing families and community together. So we've come a long way since then. We're a month and a half away from the year 2025. And as we change the slide, I'd like to mention that we're now meeting twice a month and have been since 2023. That's a lot of meetings. A lot of things had to be done. And what have we accomplished so far? We've been able to raise enough money to pay for year-round celebration, and we're still looking for donations. We've been able to recruit volunteers, people who are willing to share their time, their talent, their ideas, their resources, and in many cases, their funds to make our dream come true. And that dream is to bring all the residents, all ages, together for all kinds of activities. And you're going to be truly amazed. We hope that you'll grab a brochure out in the lobby after Town Meeting. And I know that, can you imagine, 1725 to 2025? That's 300 years. We have an awful lot to celebrate. I'd like to shout out and give a thank you to our Town Department Heads who have been so cooperative, our Police Chief, who's helped out in many ways putting together a security plan. With all these major celebration events, we have to have a security plan. I thank our Fire Chief for heading up the bonfire and the fireworks. I thank our DPW Superintendent, I should say Director, for coming together to put his team out there on the front lines, to hang almost 150 pole banners that'll be going up in December. We got a billboard. You probably saw all the lawn signs around town. We got posters being made up, our Southeast Regional. We have brochures. We have flyers. We have a TV show once a month that'll carry us through the year 2025. I expect to be kicked out of town at the end of this celebration. But I'll tell you, folks, as you take a look at the screen, you're going to see some of our events. The first event, our kickoff event, will be at Stonehill College. That'll take place on January 4th. Our second event will be our Art and Cultural Festival, scheduled for April 26, and that will be at the Oak Games Memorial Hall. We have a number of events that'll take place on June 14, Flag Day. We not only get a chance to salute the red, white, and blue, the American flag, we also have the opportunity to recognize our local veterans. We have a family-town picnic from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., a concert from 7:00 to 9:00, and fireworks go up in the air to salute the Town of Eastern at 9:00 o'clock p.m. We have a giant parade coming down Center Street, taking a right on Main Street. That'll be on July 12th. Please do not forget some of our other events. We have a block party on September 6th at the Governor Ames Estate. We have a bonfire on October 11th. That will be from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the school complex. And at that particular time, we'll have music, we'll have a concert, and we have a Lions Club barbecue. Our final signature event will be our Anniversary Gala on December 27th. That will be, of course, at Stonehill College. I'd like to thank our sponsors, who jumped up to the plate to do what they can, as they always do. I'd like to thank the Lee Williams Foundation, the Northeast Savings Bank, the Bank of Eastern. I'd like to thank the Haynes Group, Doug King, Dave Howe, Alex Pyris, the Town of Eastern, and of course, the SCU Credit Union. Before I close out my remarks, I would like to say that Eastern, Massachusetts is not only a great place to work, to live, and to enjoy, it's a terrific community to bring up a family. It's a family that comes together to care and to share. It's also a community that steps up to the plate to do what they can. I ask each and every one of you to make sure that your families, your neighbors, all come together to celebrate. The world, yes, has gotten a little crazy. We need to come together to celebrate as a community here in Bristol County. So I say to each and every one of you, thank you so much, volunteers. Thank you to our donors who have been so generous. And at this time, as I say thank you, I'm going to invite Dale Carister. And Dale's going to speak briefly about community barberships. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Dale Carister. I live at 21 South Street. I've had the privilege of serving on the committee and also the privilege of serving as its Vice Chair. My principal responsibility for the tricentennial activities is the outreach to the community organizations in town. This is not just going to be about the signature events, which are going to be phenomenal. This is truly a community planned of a series of events throughout the entire year. I've been out meeting with all sorts of community nonprofit organizations in town and really, really excited about what they are planning, each in their own way, about how to help celebrate the tricentennial. By way of example, the Lions will be doing a celebration of Eastern's history event that likely will be in May. As you may know, the Lions have done a series of celebrations of Eastern, or excuse, celebration of Eastern events, including celebration of Eastern's community service, celebration, thanking our first responders in schools for getting us through COVID, and more recently, two years ago, thanking our veterans for their services. And this year, in addition to helping out at the barbecue, they will also, with the barbecue at the bonfire event, they'll also be putting on the celebration of Eastern history event. Just on Friday, I was over at Borderlands State Park, along with the proprietor of the Josiah Keith House, which, as some of you may know, is the oldest house in Eastern, built in 1717. Dave and I had the benefit of going over and meeting with the owner a couple of months ago, and you just feel like you're enveloped in history. That house was built in 1717. Josiah Keith was the person charged with the responsibility by the Act of Incorporation from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts on December 21st, 1725, to schedule the first Town Meeting within six months of that. So here we are, carrying on a tradition of Town Meetings that started 300 years ago. I had a recent meeting with an interfaith clergy group who's planning on having an interfaith service open for everyone on November 23rd, 2025. We're also looking to have the Houses of Worship and others have a ringing of the bells on the actual 300th anniversary of this, which falls on a Sunday, December 21st, 2025. The Eastern Library is also putting together a celebration of Eastern through Eastern 300 Stories. So if you feel like you have a story you might want to share, how you fit into the fabric of Eastern and its history, by all means, reach out to them. So if we can, if you take a look, this is the website. I encourage everybody, when you have a chance, eastern300.org, and you can learn more about the events that we're doing. We will also be adding to this a calendar that will have all of the events, including those scheduled by the nonprofits and so forth. You can learn more about the Community Partners Program on that tab, donations, volunteering. And I'd recommend, folks, if you're interested in helping out, because it's going to be a phenomenal year, it really is. It is one of those things that we can all come together. Send an email to eastern300.2025@gmail.com. It's going to be a great year, and we really look forward to you all participating in. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave and Dale. And so our second presentation is by Tom Bressard, the Chair, and Nancy Donahue, Vice Chair of Promoting a Sustainable Eastern, just an update on PACE.
Thank you very much, Madam Moderator, and thank you, Mr. Reed and the Select Board, for supporting our committee work. And most of all, thank you all to the residents of Eastern for being here this evening. We just wanted to briefly tell you about our committee with the acronym PACE, which stands for Promoting a Sustainable Eastern. This committee was formed at the May Town Meeting. As the result of reviewing and passing a budget, the committee was tasked with a couple of things to look at, and I am very proud to serve on this committee. I am a 29-year resident of Eastern. I live at 10 Parkview Circle. I have just finished a 20-year career at the Eastern Public Schools. I've served on the library board for over 10 years, currently serving as the President of the Ames Free Library Board. Very proud to be on this committee, continuing to serve this town. So our committee has been tasked specifically with three questions, answering, how do we fix our revenue shortfall? How do we spend our money? And how does our budget impact our services? This committee has spent over 20 hours in meetings, hearing presentations from representatives from the school, from Town Departments, studying data, looking at comparisons with towns around us, both neighboring towns and towns that are considered DART towns as per the DESI, the Department of Secondary Schools and Education, to look at comparative communities. There has been so much learning. It has been a very targeted and mission-driven goal, and it's just been a pleasure to be part of that learning. So I'd like to show a little bit about the committee now. The committee's vision was to have a wide variety of representatives, and as you can see, we've accomplished that. We have representatives from the schools, both from union members as well as the administration side. We have representatives from the Fire and Police Department, Town Representatives from the Select Board and the Finance Committee, and also the Town Finance Director. And also, most notably, there were residents who had to interview in order to declare their desire to be on this committee and be chosen. And the most important part of this committee are those of you who have journeyed along with us during this, who have either joined us remotely during our sessions or in person. And we're here tonight to ask you to encourage that engagement. We cannot do this without you. We have a table outside. If you didn't have an opportunity to stop at that table, to please do that on your way out. This is a very unique partnership between the school and the towns and residents. I think we're very unique in towns around us for having this very important conversation. So we ask you to, again, continue to partner with us. And now I'm going to ask our committee chair, Tom Bressard, to give you a little update on what we've done.
Thanks, Nancy. Very well done, and good evening, everybody. It's great to see you all again. The PACE Committee has been working really hard, as Nancy mentioned. To this point, our first deliverable is in December, where we have to present where we believe is our level-set case. I can tell you, we have all unanimously agreed that we do have a problem. I'm not here to be alarmist, but I am here, hopefully, as Nancy had said, to incite you to engage. I will say that, because the problem is not a new one. We've been talking about it for many years in many ways, whether it was the Town Staffing and Expense Audit that we ran in 2017, that compared ourselves to comparable communities and DART communities, and we realized we do more with less overall across the board in all of our departments. In 2020, literally the month before COVID hit, the Budget Subcommittee was working with public documents, and you can go to that website, because we knew we had a challenge, understanding the balance between our revenue and our expenses. That independently confirmed the audit of 2017. We've been talking about a structural revenue deficit in our budget meetings since at least 2018 and maybe earlier. And that's not because we don't do the efforts to bring in revenue. It's simply a function of items like the set government aid we get for our school reimbursement, the amount of aid that we get in general from the state, and how we, as Eastern, generate our revenue from largely a residential tax base. That's just a fact, and I'm sure we all appreciate and love our community, just like Mr. Clifton so aptly put, better than I could ever say. That said, the equation is not hard. Town P&amp;L balance is not a complicated equation. You basically requisition revenue, and you get to expend to that amount. You don't, like the federal government, get to go and borrow if all of a sudden expenses are more. And so the solution will be one of those two things. And the reason this is coming to a head now, after all these years, one might say, why now if we've been able to find ways? And let me not take away from the huge effort that our town and schools have made to continue to find ways to manage their expenses against our revenue. But we are uniquely rolling off four-year COVID-related programs that have seven-figure impacts. Our costs are continually outstripping what is our largest revenue increase each year, which is capped at 2.5% of our growth of our real estate taxes. So we have issues and challenges that are coming to a head, and the time to engage is now, not in May of 2025, when we bring the next budget to you. Solving it on the floor of that meeting, if we've all been through some difficult meetings already in our lives here, that would be incredibly complicated, because the issue impacts people. The issue that we ultimately are solving for, while a simple equation, is very difficult. It really will speak to how we want to staff our Town Departments, how we want to staff our schools with educators. Most of our departments, both school and town, are either 80% to 90% comprised of salary. That's people. So how we engage in our community, the values we hold dear, and how we want to run our community will be largely defined by, regrettably, which is a financial equation. Revenue minus expenses equal what you get. So we will either get to May of 2025's meeting, and we will come to you with one of those solutions. One might be revenue, and one might be expense-side solution. But we would prefer to get there with your input, your engagement, your feedback on what you believe Eastern should represent, hold dear, and the values we should support from our financial budget. You can join the conversation. You can look at the PACE website. There's a ton of materials outside on our website, but if you haven't grabbed a handout, grab one. Grab a business card. There are handy-dandy QR codes to take you to a website that literally has what must be approaching 1,000 documents that we, as your committee, are trying to explore and understand how we in Eastern are performing, budgets, revenues, and expenses for us other communities. I encourage you to go look, but also join us. So January 8th, at the Queeset House, we're holding an open house. We'll have the whole committee there. If you have questions or you want to give advice, thoughts, opinions, it would really be helpful to get your engagement now, as I said. And there's no bad time to call. I think you can find our contact info. There's an email on the website. Just shoot over your thoughts. But please, whatever you do, don't wait. The issues are heavy, the consequences are material, and they will absolutely impact us, not just for this year, but for years to come. So thank you so much for your time tonight, and looking forward to a great meeting, Madam Moderator. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Tom and Nancy. Thanks, everybody, for your attention as well. So let's get the meeting started. But before we do that, of course, I just want to go over some rules. So good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Eastern's Special Town Meeting on November 18th, 2024. I'm your Town Moderator Kate Welch. Seated up here on stage, with me are the Town Clerk to my far right, Danielle Sicard, and Town Council Elizabeth Lyden. As you're seated here, waiting for the meeting to start, normally I give a whole spiel about we need to wait for 100 people, because we need 100 people for a quorum, but I'm happy to say that before 7 o'clock, we had 110, and now we have 314. So thank everybody. Thank you all for coming this evening. So seated on the floor in front of me, at the table right in front of me, are members of the Select Board. The Board Members will be presenting the articles and making recommendations on those articles. Seated also on the floor, but to my left, mostly to your right, are members of the Finance Committee, and they will be making recommendations on the articles as well. Also seated in the audience, mostly down towards the front, are Department Heads and other committee members who are here to answer questions that anyone has and help us to make good decisions for the Town of Eastern. If you're a registered voter, make sure that everybody, all of you, have checked in at the kiosks out front, and you should all have an orange card with your name on it. The cards become extremely important, as you all know, if you've been here to Town Meeting before, because I rely on those cards when you're voting. I'm going to ask you to raise the card if you're for a certain article passing, or raise the card if you're against a certain article passing. Before the articles go to a vote, I'll tell you what the vote is. Is it a simple majority? Is it a two-thirds vote? I'll alert everybody to that fact. Excuse me. If you're not registered in the Town of Eastern, but you're here just to watch, there's a section down in the front, again, to my right, mostly to your left, where you can be seated. Okay. Some rules. Before we begin, please remember that our Town Meeting is governed by Town Meeting Time as well as our bylaws and our Town Charter. There's a glossary of terms and motions and whatnot in the back of your warrants that you should have picked up on the outside coming into the auditorium. And in regards to the meeting itself, as was stated earlier, the meeting is recorded by ECAT for people to view at home, and so it can be viewed in the future. More importantly, our Town Clerk, Danielle Sicard, is making an official record of this meeting. She'll be recording the names and addresses of speakers who get up and speak, make motions, voting on any motions, et cetera. So it's important that you follow procedure. And sometimes it gets away from us, but it's really important that everybody knows that when you want to speak on any given article, when it's time to speak, there are two microphones, kind of in the mezzanine level there, if you will. You have to approach a microphone, tell us your name, so we can hear it and your address. Again, so Danielle can record your name and address. Again, if you'd like to speak on any given article, I'm going to give you the opportunity to do so. Please remember to keep your comments focused on the article itself. Any comments or attempts to start a discussion not within the scope of the article will not be allowed. Please gather your thoughts prior to making your way to the microphone, because you'll only be allowed to speak one time on any given article. Very important. One time at the microphone on each article. Once you're recognized, you'll only be able to speak, again, just one time. There's no set time limit, but of course, I have the opportunity and the right to exercise my right as the moderator to stop a speaker from continuing. Again, you have to be recognized before you speak. Name and address is extremely important. All speakers will be treated with courtesy by the moderator and everyone else in the room. No speaker will be allowed to use the meeting for personal attacks on any individual. All remarks will be directed towards the moderator. Okay? No cross-examination, no attacking somebody else, no speaking directly to somebody else. Again, voting is done by a show of hands. We've already gone over that. I will recognize motions to move the question, but if, in my opinion, there are still people waiting to speak who may add to the discussion, I'll exercise my authority to not accept a motion to move the question at that time. So the Clerk has confirmed that the return of the warrant is in order, and we have a quorum. So I would like everybody to rise, so we can say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, November 18th, 2024, and it is now 7:32. The Special Town Meeting for the Town of Eastern is called to order. Article number one.
I move that the Town vote to appropriate by transfer from free cash the sum of $583,044 to be placed into the Stabilization Fund. By way of explanation, this article moves approximately 25% of available free cash to the Stabilization Fund in accordance with the town's financial management guidelines, and the ongoing goal is to build up reserves. The Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any comments, questions, or concerns relative to Article number one? Okay, seeing none, Article number one requires a simple majority vote. All of those in favor of Article one, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed to Article one, please raise your orange card. And Article one passes by majority. Article two?
I move to dismiss Article two. By way of explanation, this article allows for the payment of prior-year bills discovered after the close of the fiscal year, should any arise. If no bills arise, this article is dismissed, and no bills arose. The Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance. The Finance Committee did not take a vote on Article two, because it's been dismissed.
Oh, no, no, right. It's a motion to dismiss. So all those in favor, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor of dismissing Article two, please raise your orange card. And all those opposed to dismissing Article two, please raise your orange card. And Article two is dismissed by majority. Article three?
I move that the Town vote to raise and appropriate from taxation the sum of $46,765 to amend the fiscal year 2025 fire and rescue budget. By way of explanation, the Fire Department requires additional funds to pay for the cost of accumulated vacation and sick leave as required by collective bargaining agreements for several retiring employees. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, concerns relative to Article number three? Okay, seeing none, Article number three requires a simple majority vote. All of those in favor of Article number three passing, please raise those orange cards. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article three passes by a majority. Article four, Select Board Member Barjor.
Good evening. I move that the Town vote to appropriate the sum of $6,674,502 for the purpose of supplementing the capital budget needs of the town for fiscal year 2025, as listed in the warrant under Article four. That to meet this appropriation, $60,054 shall be raised from taxation, $288,545 shall be transferred from free cash, $180,721 shall be transferred from the Medicaid Cost Recovery Funds, $11,631 shall be transferred from Insurance Recovery Funds, $10,000 shall be transferred funds, $10,000 shall be transferred from the fire revolving account, $118,551 shall be transferred from the surplus funds voted pursuant to article seven of the May 15, 2023 annual town meeting, and that the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, is authorized to borrow $6,500,000 for the security system upgrades for three schools on Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, or any other enabling authority, and to authorize the select board to do or to take all actions necessary or convenient to carry out these projects on behalf of or in the name of the town. By way of explanation, this article addresses the additional capital needs for fiscal year 2025 that were not funded in the annual town meeting in May. Select board recommends.
Finance committee?
Finance committee recommends.
Capital planning committee? There's a recommendation in the warrant. Any comments, questions, or concerns relative to article four? Okay, sir.
All right. Waiting to be recognized. Ryan Cook, 18 Brentwood Drive. So supplemental budget's supposed to be for emergency funds unforeseen. I have a hard time seeing how $6 million for school security systems is unforeseen. I asked this question last year, and I was addressed as, oh, this is just how we do things in Easton. I went, okay, I guess that's how we do things. But I didn't stop there. I asked, I looked in other towns, because, hey, all the other towns have their documents online, so you can look up their town meetings and their special town meetings, and you go through their warrants. Talked to friends who are on finance committees in other towns. So I asked them, do you procure police vehicles through your supplemental budget? Absolutely not to capital expenditure. How about computer system replacements? Those are known items. Security system, $6 million, when in May of '23, in the FY 2024 budget, it had 1.96 million for security system upgrades for the school, and now we're 4.5, excuse me, we're three times that. So to me, I don't understand how we continue to have supplemental budgets for capital expenditures that are known. Talked to a friend who was a police chief in another town. It's on a regular basis. They do two vehicles, two vehicles, they're on a three-year cycle, two, two, three for their police vehicles. They're not in a supplemental budget. They're in the regular budget approved by a town. This is just poor financial planning if we're constantly trying to do things through a supplemental budget and not as part of the regular budgeting process. Thank you.
Sure, thank you for your commentary. I just want to clarify, this is not a supplemental operations budget, this is the capital budget. I'm not going to speak about the professional opinion of other department heads in other communities who may have a different capital bylaw, but Easton does have its own. It's adopted by town meeting, and this is consistent with that. As far as why should the town regularly make practice in the fall, particularly police vehicles is a typical fall item for us. The reason is because we like to purchase those with available unallocated cash from free cash for those capital purposes. We don't know what those free cash funds are until the prior fiscal year, June 30th, closes. I think that's fine to have a difference of opinion on whether everything should be allocated in May, but it is completely appropriate and consistent with the town's bylaws for the voters to weigh those things again in the fall when we have more information about what our free cash from a prior year was, and perhaps some circumstantial factors with projects have changed. Speaking to the why not program it in your operations, it's recurring, as Tom and Nancy alluded to, we had a tough town meeting in May where folks were, in varying ways, talking about the challenges that our operating position is facing against a meaningful tax burden. And one of the ways that, and I'm glad those communities put everything online, we do as well, we have continued to try to narrow our operating margins to fit within Prop Two and a Half for nearly 20 years, is that we have, as a matter of policy, for a very long time, and again, it's a fair debate whether it ought to be, pulled certain capital items, although they're recurring, out of operating budgets, so that the first thing that we were cutting wasn't teachers, police, and firefighters. What that means is you'll see some of these smaller dollar recurring capital items in your spring town meeting, and you will see them in the fall. As far as the school security project, while you were correct that in a previous May town meeting, there was a number below $2 million, as was in the five-year capital improvement program, which we do publish, that was clearly laid out to be one phase of what was at that time expected to be a multi-year borrowing authorization while that project was being designed. In an ideal world, that would have all been known at once as far as whether the borrowing would be over many years. What we now know, and the schools can speak to if there are other voters with additional questions, through the design process that this body voted to authorize, is that if this funding, which was already laid out as expected to be $4.5 million if we wait till May for the fiscal '26 year, and another $4.5 million for fiscal '27, so an additional $9 million, if the project is able to be bid as one project now, and we advance some of that funding authorization, we can reduce the total exposure, so to speak, for borrowing from $9 million in the next two years to $6 million now, which would deliver the project sooner and at a lower total borrowing cost. So thank you. I hope that was helpful.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to article four? Okay, seeing none, article four requires a two-thirds majority vote. In order to pass, all of those in favor of article four passing, please raise your orange card, and all of those opposed, please raise your orange card, and article four passes by a two-thirds majority. Article five?
I move that the town vote to, one, dedicate Swift's Park Assessor's Map 44 U9A for park and recreation purposes under Mass. General Law, Chapter 45, Section 3 and 2, authorize the town to accept grants under 301 CMR 5.00 land and park programs as may be necessary on behalf of the town to affect said project. And, number three, appropriate the sum of $100,000 to be expended in anticipation of the reimbursement authorized under the state's park grant, and appropriate the sum of $36,285 from gift and donation funds for the Swift's Park reconstruction project. By way of explanation, at town meeting on May 20, 2024, the town voted to appropriate $698,000 in CPA funds for reconstruction of Swift's Park to serve as a memorial to lives lost and the first responders who selflessly served the community during the 1918 influenza panic pandemic and the COVID-19 pandemic. The total project cost was estimated at $834,285, with the remainder to be covered through grants and fundraising. Subsequently, the town applied for and was awarded a $100,000 state park grant to support the project. The state requires appropriations totaling the full amount of the project in addition to acceptance and formal dedication of the park in order to receive the $100,000 park grant. As such, town must approve this article to receive the grant. Select board recommends.
Finance committee?
Finance committee recommends.
Community preservation committee?
CPC recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to article number five?
William Donahue, 45, Forest State Road. So at May town meeting, we approved $698,000 for this project. Now you're asking for another $100,000 and another $36,000 to be transferred from the charitable gift fund as well. At what point is this going to stop? This is not an open checkbook. There are many other projects for which you'll hear tonight that are equally important, including our playgrounds, for which we have significant issues. So at what point is this going to stop as far as spending money for which really just benefits the butters and the builder across the street?
Thank you. To be clear, this article doesn't increase the spending of CPC funds on this. This is to accept a state grant. So one of the things that the project proponents were asked to do by the CPC committee recognizing those competing projects was do not request the entire construction budget, because we won't give it to you. I'm looking to the chair to make sure that's a fair summary. Go out and fundraise, which is where that $36,000 figure you allude to is, and seek grants, and they went and they did both. And so this article increases the appropriation, but it takes from non-local funds. It accepts a state grant that we have to, if we don't vote yes, and that $100,000 from the state is not able to be received, and that other portion is through funds that were donated, which again is consistent with what the direction of CPC was. So I agree, there's a lot of good projects, but this doesn't take away from those in any way.
If I may appreciate it, thanks, Connor. So this $100,000, is this already committed by the state? And if not, are you going to expend the money without receiving the grant?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry, can you repeat that again, sir?
Sure. So there's confusing information as to whether this grant is contingent upon certain acts of the town, or if it's already guaranteed subject to the approval of this warrant article as discussed.
So if I understand your question, you wanted to know if the state has guaranteed this $100,000 contingent on this vote and the work being done, and the answer is yes.
And then you're transferring $36,000. Is that private donations, or is that coming from Stonehill?
Private donations that were donated specifically for the Swift's Park project.
So it's not coming from the Stonehill payments that they make regularly?
Nope.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to article five? Okay, seeing none, article five requires a simple majority vote. All of those in favor of article five, please raise your orange card, and all of those opposed, please raise your orange card, and article five passes by a majority. Article six?
I move that the town vote to amend its prior approval of article 19 of the May 15, 2023 annual town meeting for the construction of new playgrounds at Richardson Olmsted School by eliminating the restrictions imposed on materials used for the playground surfaces with the intent to minimize the extent practicable, the amount of synthetic materials containing PFAS or other toxic chemicals. By way of explanation, town meeting authorized CPC funding for the new playgrounds at the North and South playgrounds at the Richardson Olmsted School. An amendment to that article restricts certain plastic and rubber materials, and so the construction project has utilized a corkine surface instead, the natural cork-based. The corkine quickly showed signs of failure shortly after installation, including surface cracking, separation from base, lifting at edges and signs of shedding where the top surfaces flakes off after use. This presents trip and fall risk, injury risk, and liability risk. Easton Public Schools are working with the contractor and supplier to identify solutions to the failure, which is covered under warranty, and should it be remedied by November 18th, this article would be dismissed on the floor of town meeting. If the corkine failures cannot be rectified by then, and the compliant alternatives are demonstrated to be non-viable, this article would allow the construction to proceed without restrictions on materials utilized. Select board recommends.
Finance committee?
Finance committee recommends.
And the community preservation committee also recommends. Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to article number six?
Hi, Kyla Bennett to Chickadee Lane. First, I just want to thank the CPC for making me aware of this. This was my amendment at that town meeting to not use the port-in-place that contains PFAS, and I know they were working hard to address the issues with the installer and the contractor. I guess I never closed that loop. I was out of town for three weeks. It is under warranty. I did some digging before I left on my three-week trip, talked to Philadelphia, which has huge swaths of the corkine, talked to installers in other parts of the country, including the Pacific Northwest and Canada. Nobody seems to be having these same problems, and I'm wondering whether you ever were able to find out what happened and why we seem to be uniquely having this problem and why we can't get it fixed. From my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, we had used a installer that was not familiar with this material, and I'm wondering if perhaps it was installed wrong and wanted to know where those discussions led.
Sure. And Madam Operator, if it's okay, I'll share a few comments regarding this issue and topic, and then any detailed questions that I can't get to, I'm sure Dr. Cabral and the schools will be happy to add color. First, if I could, Kyla, if you'll indulge me, but just for the benefit of everybody, I do want to say that we deeply respected the voice of the residents from last year and the amendment that you put forth, and that I can say in good faith, all of the stakeholders involved have worked with a lot of effort to try to make sure we get this right. I think that, as you all know, it was I who actually invited Dr. Bennett to join our call earlier for the CPC. This article came through the CPC because that's how it was funded last year, so it's appropriate for us for it to come through our committee. However, we have tried to be transparent, collaborative, and engaging from as soon as we learned about this, not just because of ourselves, but because the school department also wants that. I'll give you the latest update, and if I'm off, I'm happy to share it. We did reach out to the Philadelphia contacts that you provided us, three times with phone calls and three times with emails, and regrettably, we have not heard back. That, I can't say, they may be out, so I'm not being judgmental, but we have done the best that we can to reach out to the contact that you had. And as you pointed out, we did invite you to our second CPC meeting on this, and I know you were traveling, so completely understand. But the goal is to be inclusive in this process. The goal, I can speak for the schools, is to install corkine. And to give folks a little backstory, we have installed, last year, we approved a town meeting, thank you for your support, the reconstruction of the North and South playgrounds at RO. The North playground has had the corkine installed and within three weeks failed. The failure was, the installation was done by a licensed installer, licensed by Corkine, a company in Sweden, who has done dozens of installations in Sweden, let alone Philadelphia. So while only one other installation of corkine has ever been done in New England, we do have examples, and the school committee, school team was appropriate to try to select corkine as a surface because in including the Commission on Disabilities, its Chair, Tony Bossa, and their entire commission, the engineered wood fiber did not meet ADA compliance in Massachusetts according to MAAB. I don't know what that means, but somebody smarter than me can figure that out, but if you Google it, it has the governing considerations for what is and isn't considered ADA compliant. So we have tried to bring all of the stakeholders into this CPC process so that it is transparent, inclusive, and we can get to the best place possible. And Kyla, I think you know, but you actually even helped us write the warrant article language that you are all being presented with today, so we appreciated your collaborative engagement there. The regrettable part and why we're here is that as of November 18th, we don't have resolution. The installer is not being communicative. We did have the corkine manufacturer come out. The corkine manufacturer focused on are the materials mixed correctly, is the corkine treated appropriately, and were the basics of how they would evaluate met? Yes, they did, I believe. And so now it's back to the installation. Why are we here in full circle? Well, because it's installed at the North playground. This is now, as you all know, I'm a business guy, but this is now a contract law issue. We have an installation that has been clearly failed. It is a warranty issue. We can't rip it out. If we do, it would void the warranty, and we won't get paid, and the cost is about $200,000 to $250,000, depending upon the playground. So we have already invested material money trying to do the right thing, to get it right. It's failing, and we don't know why. We're trying to learn. We have another $200,000 worth of corkine sitting at the South playground right now, so that is not installed. We've paused because what we don't want to do is send good money after bad until we can learn why did the first installation fail? The primary goal and objective is to install corkine. It enables people with disabilities, not just kids, but their grandparents, their parents, and able to have access, and they can participate in that environment. There is no There is no two ways about that. That is our goal. That's the school's goal, their intent. Watch the CPC meetings. The Commission on Disabilities voted unanimously to support this because they also want corkine installed. The challenge we're having, and Kyla, I positioned it as this, it's not just about the immediate failure, but there are abnormal wear patterns on high-traffic areas underneath swing sets and around the merry-go-round. That is where we have asked for latitude with the understanding that the residents are looking to have as chemical-free an environment, safe environment as possible. If there was some latitude around high-wear areas that an alternative product could be utilized, and I think, Kyla, we had consensus that that might be possible, that that might be understandable. Speaking as an individual, the challenge is whenever in this world you try to be 100% black or white with no latitude for discretion, the challenge has become that the rest of society and their supply chain doesn't support being entirely PFAS-free to the degree we would all like. We want corkine to work. We're trying to get it to work. The installer's not off the hook. If he doesn't come to the table, then the next course in any contract dispute is the legal course. But now, we are now going through this process with corkine with an installer that we don't want to probably install on the South Playground. So I hope I did a decent job. I'm looking around at summing up what has been hours of engagement, reaching out to other commissions, reaching out to residents for why the CPC has fundamentally brought this issue back up, trying to be diligent in the monies we expend on your behalf or recommend expending. So Kyla, I apologize, I know I interspersed an answer in there, but I'll be more direct. We have not heard back from the installer yet to this date. We have had at least two meetings supposedly scheduled on a weekend that they did not show. So the team is doing the right thing, the communication channels are frequent and heavy, the rhetoric is ratcheting up, but we don't have a solution. I'm sorry to use so many words, but it was a great way to educate, I think, on a lot of meeting knowledge and information and the project. There's a lot of people trying to do the right thing. I just want to throw that out there.
Thank you. I appreciate your efforts, and I want to make sure that you don't let them off the hook. That was...
Absolutely not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Xena Delaney, 14 Arthur Road. I have similar concerns, obviously, with the PFAS materials being used. The restriction was put in place for a purpose, and that purpose still remains. We want to keep our children safe from forever chemicals, from cancer-causing chemicals, which is what PFAS is. And so we have young children that are on their hands and knees running around on cancer-causing agents, cancer-causing materials. And it sounds to me, and I appreciate your elaborating on it, but it still sounds to me that once the prohibition is lifted, then it's completely lifted. So it's not, you know, discretionary, it's lifted, and so you can use it everywhere. And so I don't think the timing is appropriate. While things are crumbling, the safety of our children is more important. And so if they need to play tag, rather than go on a merry-go-round, I'd rather them play tag until the contract issues are worked out, not worked out. Maybe we need to pivot. Maybe we need to make structures that are low to the ground, tunnels, low structures that we don't have concerns about them hitting a rubber surface that has cancer-causing materials in it. In addition to that, I just want to add, we spent millions on a water system that's clean from now or reduce the level of PFAS. And this is just going to leach into the environment, leach into our water system, which is just going to create a whole new set of problems in terms of our water filtration.
Thank you, Xena. I appreciate the commentary. Full disclosure, I have a water filter at my house. We, as a town, are incredibly, to your point, progressive on this issue. We have invested $10 million of water treatment when other cities and towns have not done that yet. They're waiting for a state solution or a federal solution. The reality is, this is a global problem that none of us asked for, and we're all trying to figure out how to deal with it, given a set of circumstances that we don't control. To your point, we did install corkine. That did require the lowering of the swing sets so that it could handle the fall ratios is probably a good way to say it, but the head impact, somebody knows better than I what I'm trying to say, but, you know, like you have to make sure it's safe and it meets impact amounts enforced per square inch. And so where I'm going with it is, I think we, as a community, are trying to knock off the primary drivers of how PFAS enters into our cycle. The number one is ingestion, right? To check on water, I think that's super important. Number two is, I believe, fire retardant and fire suits, and we're working on that. And look, huge credit to the residents of the community for bringing this issue to the forefront, and then huge credit for our residents responding to that. But we have precious capital that we've invested to try to solve for this. You're spot on. The other, the goal is not to give the latitude, and so there's a trust factor. I think that's probably the word you didn't say, but it's why we invited Kyla, it's why the school superintendent committed to the language that's in the article. And I would pose that if what we actually ended up doing to create a solution didn't meet your expectations, then that's going to be a challenge for those people that asked you for their trust. I, for myself, can understand a little bit of the challenge when the supply chain doesn't support what we're trying to accomplish. I hear when people with disabilities say, "I want to have access to go." And from their viewpoint, engineered wood fiber doesn't provide that solution. But like I said, I still have a water filter in my house. I'm appreciative that the town sponsored them, I'm appreciative I'm aware of it, and I still keep that one using, just in case. The, you know, there's talk about the Blanch Ames School, just to bring that up, and, you know, is it a balance that the top layer is made from virgin EPDM rubber, I think it is, and that that layer doesn't have PFAS, but the sub-layer does? I'm not sure where the right line is. I do know that it's very difficult in today's day and age without a global, federal, or state-level solution to support us in this, for the town of Easton to get the black and white of making it zero everywhere. My gut tells me if we said no PFAS in Easton, zero, that I don't think Target would be able to sell all of its products. I don't know how much they would be able to sell, to be honest, but that's how, to the reason why we're talking about this, prevalent it is in our society. It is literally, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm looking at the doctors, but I think when it rains, PFAS lands on us, right? So they're nodding, Dr. Bennett is nodding her head. So I guess what the difficulty for me, speaking personally, is where the line gets gray, and how do we balance that given the precious scarce resources we have? Because nobody wants kids to be hurt. And I'll give you one last anecdote, and then I'll be quiet, Xena. When this first came to the forefront, when I was a Select Board member, I had doctors in this room, who I'm looking at, Dr. Bennett, talk to me, and other doctors from hospitals say PFAS is really bad stuff, really bad. Answer, bad. And I had other doctors who said, "Need you to understand the amount of utilization a turf field gets and how that fights obesity and how that fights diabetes, and it lets kids use more." I'm not smart enough to know which of those two people are right, but I know they all work at places like Mass General, Brigham, where their doctors are respected nationally from their viewpoints. It's a tough one. So I don't know if that helped you at all, but maybe it gave you comfort that the rest of us are thinking the same way. And I think everybody here wants to try to find a solution that is good. The challenge with this one is, we're not going to install on the South Playground, we can't go forward with it, and it's going to stay closed. It's going to stay closed until, at the earliest next May meeting, when we come back to you potentially with a solution, at which point it may now be too late to install for next year, given the contract process, the installation process, and therefore now the kids have not had South Playground for two years. We're hopeful, next week, we were hopeful today, that the installer called us back and said, "I got it, something happened. We used, I don't know, A, B, and C, and it should have been D, E, and F." You're right, the timing stinks. We're kind of jammed up a little bit of, we're trying to ask for latitude, we're trying to ask, under the auspices of what we've committed to on record with Dr. Bennett, to try to get to, how do we give the kids back their school ground? How do we make it so that the investment-wise and lasts a longer period of time? So I'm probably repeating myself now, but hopefully that was helpful, and I appreciate your feedback.
Phil Donahue, 45 Horse Edge Road. So as I understand, the installer is not being responsive. We've missed the weather opportunity with 50 degrees to install it right now. It seems like we're at the point of no return with them. So one, I'd like to ask, are you pursuing other installers, too? And it's really not clear what you're proposing here. Are you proposing in this warrant to remove the restrictions and therefore ask to use the least impactful PFAS material? It's not clear from this article as described.
Right. We don't know what the ultimate material will be or the solution. As I mentioned, we're hopeful that we can use corkine and we find out why it failed. But either way, the installation of whatever the solution comes won't be until we have firmly identified the corkine challenge, and when spring comes, where you can install any other products that might be possible.
Okay.
I can, I'm just going to ask about the installer question.
Okay, thank you.
Just going to ask to answer that one as well.
Thank you.
Good evening, Alicia Cabral, Superintendent of Schools. I first would just like to echo that we definitely heard from residents that they wanted playgrounds on these sites, and residents supported it. And so once again, we thank you for your generosity. Our goal is to be very conscientious stewards of the money that you've invested. And in terms of the installer, it is not just the installer, it's also the corkine manufacturer. The manufacturer was able to come and determine, evidently corkine is a mix, and the mixture, they were able to determine that that was done correctly. The installer does not know why it has failed. The manufacturer, who is the entity that termed it a failure, does not have the answer. So I definitely don't have the answer. We have scheduled four times that they were supposed to come, cut out the affected areas, which now are several, and do forens, put in a temporary fix in those areas while they did forensics on the subsurface and the actual cracks, which go all the way to the subsurface. They have failed to appear on all four of those occasions. They have been on weekends, evenings, we've made it as accessible as possible for them to come. They have not come. They keep telling us they're trying to get teams together to come, they have not come, which is why the timing becomes an issue. Corkine can only be laid when it's 50 degrees for three days in a row. Do I know for sure that window's gone? No, but I think most of us living here know that that is probably done at this point. The South Playground will be closed because it doesn't have a surface because of that. The problem is, among other things, this is a warranty issue, and we need to allow the manufacturer and the installer the attempt to remedy the corkine. And in all sincerity, that is what we hope will happen. So we don't want to cut bait at this point because our goal is to have the corkine that we heard residents wanted. We are, that is our ultimate goal, and we hope that will happen. The timing issue becomes a problem because, other than this meeting, the only other time we can get a little bit of leniency with the language would be in late May, which is most likely way past that 50-degree window again. That will give us between now and March, late March, possibly, depending on the weather, to determine what is the cause of the corkine problem, and hopefully find the solution and have them lay the corkine in early spring, and we'll be done. However, if between now and then, they do appear and they tell us that it's a failure and they can't determine why, and they honor the warranty and don't make us pay for it, we have to do something else. And if we wait until late May, we are now incurring liquidated damages. We may have our landscape designer, our landscape company may pull out. They haven't, they didn't sign on for that long of a contract, and that ends up costing more, potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars more. And so we are just looking for the latitude to use the minimal amount or the least amount of PFAS, or whatever we can possibly do to suit the intention of the vote of the people, which is our goal and is our duty, without costing you more money by having to go to another landscape designer to pick up the project when this one leaves. So we're just looking for that latitude, knowing that corkine is our ultimate goal. We will exhaust everything until or unless they tell us it's a complete failure and they need to rip it out. At that point, our hands will be tied until we meet you again in May, and as I said, that will cost a lot, a lot more money.
Just one quick question as well. So given the lack of responsiveness of the current installer, are you considering another installer if corkine is deemed to be suitable?
Well, it's the corkine manufacturer has been the problem also.
Okay.
They also have not come. We've been in contact with both of them. The corkine installer, we really didn't have a very big competitive bid process because there aren't many of them around that said they were willing to come to Massachusetts to put it in. So we were limited in who we had, but this company is a certified, trained provider by corkine. Corkine endorses them and tells us this is a certified installer. So corkine is standing by the installer at this point, but both of them have been unresponsive.
Thank you.
Sure.
Hi, my name is Priscilla Almquist Olsen. I'm a Swede, Swedish-American, and this product obviously works in a country, Sweden, which is much colder and has a, than we are here. Has any attempt been made, I have several parts of this statement, has any attempt been made to reach out to the original manufacturer in Sweden for the most expertise on this subject? That's number one. Number two, I think that you're talking about $100,000. That's something that is, I'm just thinking about our children. Our children are worth more than $100,000 if that's going to be the consequence. I think that should be just taken off the table. PFAS is a cancer-causing agent. We talked about this last time. We talked about our grandchildren. I'm a grandmother. I talked about that. And I begged all of you last year to consider the children and their future. So we know, for example, that the artificial turf is filled with PFAS, and yet that was installed here. It's a fact that the most, the largest incidence of cancer is with soccer goalies. Why? Why? Because they're rolling around on the ground on that turf, and it's getting into their skin and going into their bloodstream and causing them to have cancer. And these are young people. So we have to consider the children and their future. That should be the bottom line. And we have a warranty, don't we? Let the warranty speak for, let's go exert the warranty. And also, if they haven't been showing up, where's our council? Where's our town council? Why aren't we serving them with some kind of a legal notice? Get them into court. Have them answer to a judge as opposed to answering to the superintendent at schools. I think this whole thing is just ludicrous. We're being asked to have faith in everybody? Uh-uh. Where was the faith when everybody agreed we should have artificial turf with PFAS in it? No, no. This is, this is really, you know, I'm having one of those senior moments. That word, what's that word when it's something is, comes before us too soon? It's pre what? Pre what? Premature, yes. This particular warrant... This particular warrant is premature. So get those lawyers that we pay $170,000 a year for, get them to, get these people here on site and get, get the manufacturer to get a representative from Sweden. They know how to do it right, they've done it right for a long, long time. So that's, you know, I think this whole article is premature and I recommend that it be voted down. And if, and if you are really sincere, you will work your butts off to get this resolved so that in our May meeting, we'll be able to deal with this on a much more factual and realistic basis. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So when I say that we've had four appointments, they were originally scheduled to come on Indigenous Peoples' Weekend in October. So we're talking about a four-week period of time. So we have been very relentless with them and the, a lawyer needs to have us do our due diligence before they will get involved and write a letter. We have to allow them to come, it's been four weeks. I was very relentless with them because I wanted to have an answer for town meeting. We are just giving you the information. Certainly you can vote as you wish. I will tell you that the company is actually from Portugal. I was quite excited about that because I'm one of the few Portuguese people around here. And I was very proud of the fact it was from Portugal. Now, not so much, but I am hoping that they will fix it. The representative from Portugal did come, they determined that the mixture was correct, but they don't know why it isn't working. And so we're going to keep working with them. We want the Corkeen, we're trying to get the Corkeen. You just need to be aware that the South Playground will be closed. Should the North, as soon as the rain falls into the cracks and it expands, that will become a hazard for children and that will also be closed. And it will not be $100,000, it will be several hundred thousand dollars, closer to million, to delay the project, which is your choice. We just need you to vote your conscience and we will work with what you give us. But that is the only other surface we are aware of. So the playground could be closed indefinitely or we would take the existing structures out and put the blacktop back. So we just want to make sure you're aware of the options and the costs for those options. What you decide to do, we will work with whatever you decide to do. And we are all
Sorry.
Career educators and so all we think about is children. I just want to assure you of that.
Anton Alvesa Jr., A. Benjamin Drive, Commission on Disability Chair. For those who don't know what the MAAB stands for, it's the Massachusetts Architectural Board, which governs all ADA accessibilities. I'm willing to offer my services as the chair to help the school or with Utah or town to reach out to the manufacturers or the installer. Something from the Commission on Disability might make them move a little bit faster.
Thank you, Tony, and I appreciate you and your commission's efforts to date. And I, I would just push back a touch and Priscilla, thank you for all the comments, but the key that I would just say is everybody's working really hard. We may not have the answers or the information that we all would like to have as we enter these very important meetings, but it's not because of a lack of effort. It's something that's been forefront for many, many days since the issue first arose. So just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Okay, I think we have one more. Mr. Waluka.
Thank you. Aaron Waluka, 31 R. Quanicket. The cost of the delay went from $100,000 to a couple hundred thousand to up to a million. How is that happening? Because I'm listening to the dates and when this can be installed and I'm hearing if it takes two years to get the proper thing down instead of hurting our children or putting our children at risk, then it makes sense to wait two years and maybe have blacktop. I think we all had sand, blacktop and grass anyways and we're here. If it's too late in the season to install anything else and you're talking about March instead of May to be able to do something, why don't we use this time from now till then to figure this out and come up with a better solution or figure out what's going on with the Corkeen? And if we have to install it next September and it costs us one year, it's still worth it for that time. I guess I'm confused where up to a million dollars could be lost during the delay. Also, on, and I apologize, I'm gonna call her the Swede, I didn't, I didn't hear your name, as soon as you said I'm, I'm the Swede, I don't remember the rest, except for what you said. On her point, the legal, our council, just putting a 93A letter out on this, they have it on their system, it's a, probably a 20-minute thing for them to do. I don't know how much more legwork you need than four missed appointments and no responses to let them know that we're serious, at least, and that they have 30 days to respond to that. If they don't, then the town could, I believe, I'm not an attorney, but I believe the town could get trouble damages on the million dollars of extra and getting it fixed. So that might be a thought. But I'm wondering if it makes sense to move this motion to the May town meeting.
So again, I never said $100,000. Priscilla said $100,000. I said several hundred thousand. That was my initial statement in my mind, that was the high end of several hundred thousand. So I tried to clarify, I didn't mean anything close to $100,000. So that's maybe where the different numbers are coming from. In terms of, we understand the legal steps, we just wanted to get guidance this evening on what you are looking for us to do. If the playgrounds are to remain closed, if you want the structures out and blacktop back, that is something that you can vote on. You can say Corkeen or nothing else. That is how it stands right now. That is what the vote is for this evening. So we were waiting till this evening to get guidance from you. That is certainly your prerogative. Did you ask me something else?
Well, you addressed the, the million and the several hundred thousand. Why would it cost a million dollars to wait till May?
Because, well, it could, especially if you wait until September, because you need to most likely rebid the project, especially if you're going until September. And so you going through the whole bidding process again, you have another, maybe another manufacturer or installer come in. Right now, we have a landscape designer who has done the work that they're supposed to do and for them to stay on until September, I don't know if there are contractors here that know the terminology better than I do, it is going to cost a lot more money.
As a, not a commercial contractor, I've done commercial work, but I would think that you could let them know their job's done here and if it was gonna cost you a million dollars to get them to wait till next September, among the other things.
Well, their job is through the project, the finish of the project, installation, the finish of the project.
I'd have to, I, I don't know the answer to that. I just think that waiting till next year makes sense, or at least until May when we have more answers.
Thanks. That's your prerogative.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions, comments or concerns relative to Article Six? I see one more.
Tristan Warnicki, 17 Blackbrook Road. I think we are all getting the picture that you guys really care about this project and really care about the kids. It's just the fact that you're coming to us with this change saying, "Trust us," and putting no guardrails in place. You're not doing anything to tie your hands at all on this. And if it comes out that, that the Corkeen doesn't work, you guys then have kind of an open rules on it that allow you to do whatever you see fit for the next thing. And it's that, we, it's not that we don't trust you, it's just that you haven't come to us with an, with an amendment that says, "This is as far as we want to go with this." You just say, "Remove all the rules." And that's kind of hard, hard to go with. I mean, if you were to change it to, you know, as you said, just the high-traffic areas or some other, you know, "We're willing to go this far," but right now, you know, this is, you, you're just pulling everything away. You're just saying, "Corkeen or nothing," and that's what this vote is. And so that's really what you're leaving us as a decision, right?
No, it's, we're looking for latitude on the language. I can only reference the discussion, I'm sorry, Dr. Bennett, to call you by name, but I can only reference the discussion we had with Dr. Bennett where we talked about potentially what's called a hybrid solution, where you could have, if the Corkeen were to work, you could have mostly Corkeen with small areas of the port in place under the swings or the, around the merry-go-round, they call it spinner. But Dr. Bennett said she was amenable to that, but I can't tell you that's the solution yet because I don't know if that Corkeen's gonna work. So it would be disingenuous for me to say we're gonna do hybrid because we don't know if the Corkeen can be used yet.
Calling the question?
Call the question, call the question. Can I call the question?
We need a second. Okay. Okay, so, so all in favor of calling the question, just please raise your orange cards. It's a two-thirds vote, two-thirds vote. Okay, all those opposed. Okay, so we're gonna call the question. So, yes, there was a two-thirds vote to call the question. So all those in favor of Article Six, the way that it's written, this also requires a two-thirds vote in order for Article Six to pass. All those in favor, please raise your orange cards. And all those opposed, please raise your orange cards. Okay, so Article Six fails. Okay, Article Seven, Select Board Member Lamb.
I moved at the town vote pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A to amend the zoning map of the town of Easton, adopted at a town meeting March 27, 1973, and amended through May 20, 2024 by rezoning 388 Depot Street, Map 38U, Lot 17, residential to business as printed in the supplement titled "Zoning Amendments, Section 235." By way of explanation, a request for proposals was issued for the sale of Center School, 388 Depot Street, redevelopment of the site as a hub for community recreation, consistent with the November 2022 town meeting vote authorizing the select board to dispose of the property for community or recreational facilities uses. The responsive proposal for an indoor soccer facility is a recreational use, but the existing residential zoning does not allow such use if it is commercial rather than accessory to a nonprofit use. Adjusting this to business provides the flexibility necessary via special permit for commercial recreational uses. The town will make a brief presentation about this article. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Planning and Zoning Board, recommendation.
Thank you, good evening. So tonight, under Article Seven, voters are being asked to rezone the former Center School to business in order to allow a contingent sale by the select board to proceed, which would make possible a redevelopment of the site as a commercial indoor and outdoor soccer complex. This discussion and this article may sound familiar because two years ago, voters at town meeting debated and ultimately approved the authority for the board to sell this property. At the time, residential zoning was proposed as that allowed indoor recreation and community center type uses for nonprofit entities. Voters that night also amended that authorization to require that before the select board engage in any sale process, that we must first divide yardly rink from the parcel to maintain public ownership of that community asset, which we have since done, and also restricted the board's ability to sell the property to only recreational or community center type uses. Consistent with those votes of town meeting, the board issued a request for proposals for such facilities this year and received one responsive proposal to redevelop the property as an indoor and outdoor soccer facility. For good reason, the sale of public property in Massachusetts is strictly governed by state law. And the decision to request proposals, along with a review of the proposal that was received, were done at open meetings throughout the summer and fall this year. Consistent with that vote of town meeting two years ago, the board did limit proposals to only community and recreational facility type uses, and they received one responsive proposal for a soccer complex. And for two meetings in October, the board heard that presentation from the project proponents and voted to award the sale to Galeno and Powers Eastern residents who currently own and operate the Fieldhouse Arena on Eastman Street. Specifically addressing what this article does, it changes the zoning at the former Center School to business. This would allow the proposal not to proceed straight to construction, but to proceed to the next steps of design and permitting, because this proposal is at this stage a conceptual level proposal. Throughout the fall, the rezoning article was reviewed and unanimously recommended by the select board, the planning board and the finance committee. It's also really important to emphasize what this article does not do. Although rezoning allows the proposal to proceed to the next steps in the public process, voting yes tonight does not change that the proponents still must execute a purchase and sales agreement with the select board for the property. They would then need to engage with all necessary permitting with town boards and departments, including seeking a special permit at public hearings of the Zoning Board of Appeals, site plan review, conservation, things of that nature. And third, it doesn't change, if this article is approved, that the proponents must deliver on what that RFP called for, which is consistent with your vote two years ago, which is that the site can only be redeveloped for recreational or community center type uses. It cannot, even if this article passes, then be changed to housing or a, I don't want to say strip mall, but retail, or something that was inconsistent with your vote or the RFP. We've heard a lot of good questions through this process and one of which is, how do you maintain that type of control if your zoning is business? Can't all sorts of things go in a business zone? In a vacuum, yes. And that's a great question that I'd like to address. So there's a lot of uses allowed under business zoning, but this article does not mean that the proponents can win the bid, so to speak, by proposing a recreation facility, getting this zoning approved tonight if voters wish to do so, and then build a shopping plaza. The town requires that the eventual purchase and sales agreement for this property includes a post-closing agreement which incorporates their specific proposal for reuse and would include language to return the property to the town should the proponents not deliver on the facility as was requested. This article also does not take the place for detailed site plan review or special permit process at public board meetings. Those meetings where citizen boards review traffic, lighting, building size, wetland buffers and other items of public concern. In order to get to those public processes, this site needs to have zoning that even allows that to begin, which it currently does not. So voting on this doesn't circumvent the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Planning Board, CONCOM, but a proponent seeking to go into that permitting currently doesn't have zoning that would let them do so. So if the community tonight decides that they want to allow this proposal to get to the next steps in that public process and vote yes, it still has to go through a lot of public process and review before getting to permits and construction. The select board has made clear and the proponents have acknowledged how important it is that they work collaboratively with the community and with their neighbors if they're to bring this opportunity forward to Easton. And a no vote on the article would terminate the contingent sale and the redevelopment and Center School would remain vacant. Thank you.
Okay, before we go to questions, comments and concerns, I'm just gonna ask the Planning Board again to repeat your recommendation. Can you, thank you.
The Planning and Zoning Board met on October 8, 2024 and voted 4-0 in favor to recommend seven.
Thank you. Okay, now, any questions, comments or concerns relative to Article Seven?
Kevin Powers, 42 Baldwin Street. First of all, I just want to clear up one thing, it would not be a soccer facility, it would be a multi-sport facility that would encompass lacrosse, field hockey, softball, baseball, so it would be very much a multi-use facility, not primary a soccer facility. I'm honored and excited to even have the opportunity to ask my friends, neighbors, I'm honored and excited to even have the opportunity to ask my friends, neighbors, and fellow citizens for support in making the vision of former Center School property a reality. Peter Galeno and I are both townies. We're immensely proud of it. The word "townie" has a negative connotation, but I take pride in being called a "townie." We have been, we have both grown up in Easton, actively participated in the town's athletic leagues for students, and proudly graduated from all of Ames. Easton has had such an impact on our lives that we have both chosen to continue to make the Town of Easton a central part of our lives. Pete owns successful businesses in Easton, Galeno and Associates, and Fieldhouse Arena. I own a home, I'm raising a family in town, and continue to be an active participant in town through various organizations. I'm a member on the Eastern Youth Soccer Board. Pete and I were adamant that when we wanted to bring this vision to life, it was going to be in Easton. Our roots are in Easton, and we wanted to create a better athletic facility experience by incorporating the rich history, culture, and feel of Easton. We certainly could've looked at other towns, but we were adamant that we wanted to do this in the town that we grew up in. Our inspiration for the look and feel that we'd like to create would be a mix of town staples, such as Shovel Town Brewery, Rose's Food Shop, Langwater Farm, Frothingham Park, as well as commemorate the heritage of Center School, and we're looking at creative ways of doing that. Our proposal is to create a long-lasting fixture in town that'll be utilized for a wide range of sports and activities, develop a food and beverage component with an inviting space for people to gather and socialize, provide indoor and outdoor space to potentially host community meetings, training sessions, birthday parties, and other family fun events. The facility would not only answer a desperate and identified need in town for additional athletic fields by creating a first-class facility for local athletes, but truly create a unique space in town that offers tremendous potential for us to weave into the fabric of the town. Additional, very important benefits for the town of this facility are the creation of new employment, opportunities, tax revenue, and a central location which can act as a connection between current commercial and retail sectors, resulting in increased business. We are proposing to utilize field turf for both the indoor and outdoor fields, and would like to directly address some of the concerns regarding the use of field turf. It is our goal to provide the best quality field turf for the athletes, their safety resulting in a better playing experience. We are doing our research, and will be relying on field turf experts to consult with and select the best field turf option able to withstand the wear and tear of New England's varying weather conditions. There have been vast improvements in the safety in materials and components used in field turf itself, as well as the infill. Infill provides impact absorption, stability, reinforcement, and improves drainage on the field. We're reviewing several organic and silica-based infills. We feel very strongly about not using rubber infill. The Fieldhouse currently does not use it and has a fantastic playing surface. Our goal is to source field turf that consists of the most environmentally friendly components currently available on the market. We will need to be mindful of the project's budget and viability as we assess the field turf options. There has been a dramatic and welcome shift to focus on alternative materials in manufacturing processes to eliminate or vastly reduce some of the previously used chemicals and components such as PFAS. One of the leading manufacturers of field turf, AstroTurf, that we've been reviewing has been one of the leading manufacturers that developed new technologies, improved components, and better manufacturing processes. They were the first synthetic turf company to develop PFAS-free turf offering. Utilizing field turf allows for nearly, excuse me, allows for nearly year-round usage of both fields and mitigates the need to cancel activities due to weather, allowing this project to be economically viable. This will be a very expensive project to construct, and we want to make sure that we are providing a playing surface that is going to be available for us to utilize it as much as possible, as safe as possible, and a quality playing surface. Field turf also allows for a lower maintenance cost, water conservation, which I know is very important in the Town of Easton, surface durability, consistency, and it prevents the need to use fertilizers and pesticides. Also, just addressing some of the potential impacts to the local neighborhood and area, we're fully committed to utilize the full design process, as Connor had mentioned, and work with the town boards to determine the best possible layout of the site, structure size, and traffic flow pattern. The recent road improvements on Depot Street, the widening of the road, the improved sidewalks and traffic light should be extremely helpful with the accessibility of the facility. With regards to Yardly Rink, and I believe this was brought up, part of our layout is to provide parking spaces to be used for the rink patrons, and we welcome the opportunity to provide additional support for the rink and help enhance the iconic trademark that the rink, I'm sorry, iconic tradition that the rink represents. I skated there myself, not very successfully, but I had fond memories there, and we'd love to help, help bring those forward. So in voting for rezoning of this property, you're voting for the following: a step forward, a usage that is perfectly aligned with the town's desired use of the space. With the ever-expanding athletic facilities being offered today, this provides an additional space for our kids to play, adults as well. It provides preservation of public access for Yardly Rink. It's also an opportunity for our kids to exercise and continue along the path of health and wellness, get them off their phones, off their computers. For local athletes to have a top-notch facility to train and play in in Easton is very important. Turning a vacant and decaying building into a community hub, sorry, into a hub for community engagement, renew employment opportunities and a much-needed tax revenue, for the creation of a long-lasting fixture in town, the opportunity for us to collaborate with the town to bring this vision to life and provide a truly better athletics experience and asset for the town. You're voting to give two true products of Easton, its school system and athletic teams, a chance to create something special for the town. We're both from the town, live and work in town, care about Easton and its citizens, and would love the opportunity to create this experience for you. Thank you for your time, your support, and your vote to rezone the former Center School property to allow us to develop a dynamic environment and a true asset to the town. Thank you.
Priscilla Almquist Olsen. Fifty-nine Seaver Street, Northeastern. Okay. I think it's a wonderful idea, too, and I can see that everybody here agrees. My concern is, maybe Connor, you can, you can answer this question. Will the language of the zoning change as a business district? Will it include a clause that says that the usage must be limited solely to recreational usage? Number one. And number two, is it possible, and this is a question for our lawyer in residence, I'm a lawyer too, but I'm not gonna pretend that I know the answer. Can we put in the deed to, from the town to this group that wants to develop this wonderful recreational facility, a reverter clause? Which allows the town to have the property revert to them so that they, we can have control that no businesses except recreational facilities will be on the premises? And finally, is there something in the ordinance that we're changing that will limit the recreational activities to things that are not objectionable? For example, suppose Ensgar wants to come to that location. I think that would be an objectionable recreational facility. So I would like to see some exceptions to recreational facilities. I would like to see a reverter clause in the deed from the town to this group, if that's possible, so that we could then have control over the fact that, A, it'll be recreational in perpetuity, and B, that the recreational usage will be what all of us here in Easton would be in favor of. Connor?
Thank you. So forgive me if my presentation wasn't clear. We do intend, through the purchase and sale, to use what we call a post-closing agreement, but it sounds like you're talking as a reverter clause. You can come up here, it's less fun than it looks. So the the, the form of our purchase and sales agreement, we use this one.
Into the microphone, Connor.
The form of our purchase and sales agreement, which we used with the sale of Merle Hall after town meeting greenlit that, includes what we call a post-closing agreement that incorporates an expected time for performance of the purchaser to deliver on the specific proposal that they made. And if they do not, language to revert it back to the town. Yes, so in this case, the, you should also acknowledge, as I did in presentation, we haven't finalized the purchase and sale agreement. We would, although the developers are free to say no, I'm not gonna put them on the spot at town meeting, but we made clear in the RFP that while we can talk about timelines and things of that nature, we will not negotiate on having that language in the PNS.
No, and I'm gonna, I just wanna remind everybody for a moment. We have a lot of people, I just wanna remind everybody for a moment. We have a lot of people waiting, and I need you all to, I need you all to, just let me speak. Ma'am, let me speak. I just need you all to remember that we are talking about the zoning, and we need to stay within the scope, okay? So just remember so that everybody who wants to speak can speak as long as it's within the scope of the article. Okay, go ahead.
So as to the question that was asked at the microphone, the zoning language itself, we have an existing prescribed table of allowable uses in our zoning bylaw, and so this type of recreational use is allowed in the business zone, which is why the Planning Board recommended it. As to whether theoretically the Planning Board could change or make a specific zone for this, I think that may get into spot zoning, but I'm not an expert there. The town's ability to try to control and enforce the outcome we sought through that RFP based on town meeting's vote is through that purchase and sale process and the post-closing agreement and the ability to revert it. Those are, those are great questions that we will need to work through in the negotiation of a purchase and sale with legal counsel. So the, the existing, the existing, this is moving it to an existing zone we have that doesn't have contemplations for that type of thing, nor, nor do we on any other private property owner.
Okay, we need to stay within the scope. Next person. Sir. Next person.
Hi, I'm Chris Persio. I live on Meeting House Lane. I serve on the Finance Committee, but I am speaking as a, as a resident. First of all, I applaud this project. I think it would be fantastic to have a sports complex in that location. I applaud the family that is behind the project and the efforts that they're taking to create this, this facility for the, for the community. I come here with one question, which is, Connor, you mentioned that if the, if, if the owners, if the, if the property is conveyed to the new ownership, they cannot repurpose that use for a different type of business zoning. However, I, I do think that if this project failed to move forward, if the, because it is just a concept, and the residents tonight prove that zoning change, all the other potential business zoning uses of that property would potentially be available.
That's a, a good question, and it's a thoughtful one. The zoning, in a vacuum, yes. However, the town meeting restriction on the Select Board's ability, you ultimately are the authority on whether public property can be sold or not. That's not a decision I can make or the board can make. And when voters made that decision in twenty twenty-two, they prohibited that it be sold for anything other than community center or recreational uses, and that supersedes the zoning. So it's a, a good question. So if the vote tonight is no, this transaction ends. We would obviously honor the vote of the community, but the board could not then reissue an RFP for other allowable business uses. And I think what you asked is, what if the town meeting says yes tonight and the proposal doesn't work out? We would still be bound to only be able to issue requests for proposals that fit that voter-imposed restriction of recreational or community center type uses.
Right. So I like the project even better, but I can't vote for it tonight because we, just a little while ago, decided that a playground that's the size of a small parking lot shouldn't have materials in it that have PFAS because it's not good for our kids and it's not good for our water. We just installed a ten million dollar PFAS remediation system that has filters in it that cost somewhere between a half a million and a million dollars to, to replace. And we're talking about literally putting fields of artificial turf down literally fifty yards away from wetlands in this town. There has been no study done on what the, what's the tax revenue gonna be in this facility? Fifty K, a hundred K a year? And if it requires an extra filter every five years, the town's gonna be upside down. Right, so it, it doesn't make sense for the town to be putting in synthetic fields that have PFAS in them. I know there was a mention about one particular brand of synthetic turf that alleges that they do not have PFAS. I think they actually do, but if we avail ourselves to the thought that they don't, they contain arsenic and other chemicals that are, are known to cause cancer in kids. There is no safe synthetic field. There is an obvious solution to that, and it came up tonight as being cost prohibitive, and that's grass. We use grass in all the other fields that, our kids play soccer in, soccer around the town. And this is our residents' only time where we have leverage, which is with this zoning. If the zoning goes through, then we're gonna have to be going to Planning Board meetings, going to CONCOM meetings, going to a whole bunch of other, what we call open meetings, but they're very sparsely attended, and most of the three hundred and fifty-some-odd people in here are not gonna know what happens, and then we're gonna be reading on Facebook, how the hell did this happen? So I encourage people to get behind the project, but to vote that zoning change down now and to come back in the spring with one that uses grass.
Sir.
Richard McGee, nine Alderwood Drive. I'm a big supporter of this project, and there's a couple of reasons why. I have been a seventeen-year resident of Easton, twenty-one years have become my four years at Stone Hill College. I have a fifteen-year-old and an eleven-year-old, and like many people in this room, four to five nights a week, I'm loading my children into a car, driving twenty-five minutes to Mansfield, thirty minutes to Taunton, forty-five minutes to Weymouth, seventy minutes to Lancaster, so those children can play on Fieldturf fields. Having a facility like that in town will address the need that the town has for more recreational space for our young athletes to be able to play much, much closer to home, saving a lot of these students eight hours a week in the car going back and forth to practice to have something right in the town. Second of all, this project addresses exactly what the group set out to do two years ago when we talked about future use of the Center School space. I know a lot of other concerns have come up. These gentlemen have talked about through the planning process addressing those concerns, but having this space in the Center School property not only gets it a positive future use, but relieves the town of the liability of the abatement, the maintenance of an aging and decaying building. The last reason that I'm in full support of this project is the two gentlemen who are running the project. Mr. Galeno and Mr. Powers have been lifelong pillars of the community inside of Easton. If you go to the Pan Mass Challenge, the Love for Lindley Foundation, Eastern Youth Soccer, these guys are the first ones there, they're the last ones there, emptying the trash, making sure these projects go smoothly. They care about the community, they're active members here, and they're gonna work side by side with everyone here to make sure all of these concerns are addressed. This is tonight about moving the zoning ahead so that this can take the next step. All of those decisions, they're gonna be on the table for us to talk about. Kevin mentioned it in his comments. They're gonna talk about the material used in the Fieldturf. They're gonna talk about things like that. They're gonna talk about traffic, make sure that everyone in the room's concerns are met so that we can move forward with a viable project that does what we needed to do for the town. Thank you.
Kyla Bennett, two Chickadee Lane. I am a member of the Climate Action Plan Advisory Group, but I am speaking in my personal capacity. This is the third time in my thirty-four years in Easton that I have come before you to talk about artificial turf. Yes, the article before us is about changing the zoning from residential to business, but the proposal that is really before us tonight is for at least two artificial turf fields, one inside and one outside. The proposal also calls for two hundred parking spaces. They say they're gonna provide parking spaces to be used for the rink patrons, but not sure who's gonna enforce that, if there's a big event there and somebody wants to go skating, who's gonna be making sure that those spaces are open for those people? The plan calls for clearing and construction up to fifty feet from the wetlands. We have a bylaw in town, and yes, I know this is gonna go before the Conservation Commission where it will probably be rubber stamped. Also, a portion of the property is located within a flood hazard zone. Not my words, the proponents' words. And I have all the respect in the world. Mr. Galeno was a good friend of my son's, they grew up together. He's a wonderful young man. It has nothing to do with them. What it has to do with is the health of our community and money, for those of you who only care about the money part. Because this is in a flood hazard Because this is in a flood hazard zone, you should be aware that EPA Region One in Boston considers artificial turf to be impervious, identical to asphalt. In other words, and these are EPA's words, artificial turf prevents or significantly impedes the infiltration of water into the underlying soil. When you're cutting down these trees, which loses the evapotranspiration, when you're putting down impervious materials, which is artificial turf, you will get flooding, particularly with climate change and the rain bombs that we're getting. They also say our goal is to source field turf that consists of the most environmentally friendly components currently available. There is no such thing. This is plastic. It's a fossil fuel product. It's plastic and every single brand of artificial turf contains PFAS. How do I know? I am a PhD scientist, I am a lawyer. I am the one who discovered PFAS in artificial turf in 2019. I came before you and begged you not to put in the artificial turf field at OA. I begged you. You know what one of the committees said to me? Dr. Bennett, we so appreciate your expertise, but we Googled it and we think it's safe. I am a paid expert witness in court cases around the country on this issue. And I can tell you in no uncertain terms that every single brand of artificial turf contains concerning amount of PFAS that leaches off. In fact, since the last time I was up here arguing this to you, Dr. Graham Peasley, one of my colleagues at Notre Dame University, has determined that in one year, one artificial turf field will contaminate 800,000 gallons of water with PFAS over EPA's current limits. And guess what the safety level of PFAS are of the two most common PFAS, one of which is almost always found in artificial turf? Zero. There is no safe limit of PFAS. It can be ingested, it can be inhaled, and it can be dermally absorbed. In fact, I recently did a study that was published in the Washington Post that showed that children playing on artificial turf get the PFAS all over their bodies. There is no safe level of this stuff. That is reserved for things like uranium and benzene. These are carcinogens. You want to know why I wear this mask? Long after all of you thought the pandemic is over, because I had a brain tumor. I almost died. What was it from? It was from PFAS. There have been people dying in this town, children dying in this town. These are carcinogens. Has anyone on the finance committee done an analysis of how much more it's going to cost this town to replace those filters every year when we're contaminating an additional 800,000 gallons a year? Has anyone done that analysis? I think the answer is no. They claim the alternatives they're reviewing are PFAS-free synthetic turf options, such as AstroTurf, ProGreen, and SimpleTurf. Let's see, AstroTurf. The detection limit on their lab report saying that it's PFAS-free? Less than 100 million parts per trillion. That's how they define PFAS-free. 100 million parts per trillion. EPA's drinking water limit is four parts per trillion. SimpleTurf. They only tested for two PFAS and they used the wrong test and they said anything under 100 parts per trillion means PFAS-free. That doesn't mean PFAS-free. ProGreen. 430 parts per million, which is 430 million parts per trillion. So when you tell me that you're going to the experts, you're going to the salespeople who want to put this artificial turf in, this is, we have already spent $11.2 million on a filtration plant. I heard from a town official, our water's clean now, so it's okay. No, it's not okay.
Okay, Dr. Bennett, I'm going to stop you because this is clearly now, we're way beyond the scope and we have a lot of people who are waiting to talk about zoning. So I'm going to stop you. No, I'm going to stop you. Next. Can I say one more thing? No, that's it. You're done. Next.
Hi, Sam Kelly, 370 Center Street. I'm a 20-year resident of this town, a mom of three, and the proud owner of Easton Learning Adventures Preschool down on Main Street. So I've really loved watching this town over the last 20 years grow and develop while still holding on to that rich history and small-town charm. So when it comes to big decisions, I certainly don't take them lightly, but I fully back and support this proposed article tonight. Like most parents in, in town, I have spent countless hours driving my kids everywhere for practices, trainings, games, from regular teams to pickup leagues to town teams. And not only the hours spent driving to these other facilities and paying these other facilities, but then we put all of our money also into their businesses and their restaurants and supporting them when we could be supporting our own town. So I really do think this zoning change could change it all and that would not only benefit the kids who play soccer, but like Kevin had mentioned, baseball clinics and softball clinics and lacrosse and all other kinds of sports that our kids are playing. And the economic benefits would be great as well, bringing in revenue, employment opportunities, increasing sales at all of our in-town restaurants and other businesses when people do come in for these things, while also protecting and preserving Yardly Rink, which I know my kids and myself, we go there often. And it turns this vacant building into a hub for community engagement. We all know that the additional field space is desperately needed in this town and the central location is perfect for people driving in, local people, bikes, walking in. The location right on Depot, I think, is, is perfect in this town. I'm definitely not a doctor, I am not a scientist. I spend more than 50 hours a week with children under five years old, so you can imagine what that looks like. But I do believe this is a sound proposal brought to the table by good people, good people who like you and I care about this town and its people. I do think Easton needs this and I think our kids deserve this, so, oh yeah.
Aaron Waluka, 31 Rear Perquonicet. Sorry. The Yardly Rink parking, I know it was brought up because that was an amendment at the last town meeting. How are they go, how are they addressing that or are we carving a piece out? Because it's a little unclear on the picture if the parking would be around the rink there?
So before I get gobbled out by moderator, because that's not, it's specifically in the article, when it was carved out at the planning board, there is a piece of the parking that is currently flushed to the west side of the rink that is on the town-owned land.
Okay, so there's some parking there, not on the north side? It, it looked like there might have been some, if I'm heading in the right direction.
I don't have a map in front of me, I'm sorry, but there is a slipper of it that's currently immediately adjacent to it.
Only, only on one side of it?
I believe that's the case.
Okay. Now, from the picture, it's a little hard to tell. Access to that, like someone brought up, will that be a deed restriction to make sure that the townspeople have access if they have overflow parking or are they going to use the Yardly parking?
I don't believe it's fair intent to use the Yardly parking, but again, that's, deed restrictions will be incorporated into the purchase and sale, which we can't get to if there's no way to permit it, but we have every interest in preserving access to the rink, consistent with the vote two years ago. Thank you.
Yep. You'd said that it can't be used, it can't become housing and I'm just, this is just an honest question. If you sell it and someone, it's under different ownership or the new ownership and they go to a 40B project, how can the town get in the way of that?
It's a good question. At some point, to be clear, even when you have a post-closing agreement negotiated through the purchase and sale, if the project is built and delivered, setting aside negotiated rights of first refusal of things of that nature, which again would be through the negotiation of a purchase and sale, yes, at a certain point, they're off and running, they own and, and are operating the property, right? It's, it's not dissimilar to Moro Hall where Stonehill College bid on that, they purchased it, they have a certain timeframe for delivering what they wanted to do to renovate it and if they did not, that would return to the town. It sounds like in this hypothetical, somebody does deliver on that, they do own and operate it consistent with what we've asked for, but in the future, could they sell it? Sure, I mean, there's, if the number one priority is not have the property out of the public control at any point, you should not sell it. But to be clear, that is what voters authorized in 2022.
Okay, on, on the same idea, I keep hearing a post-closing agreement. When post-closing agreement is used, are we referring to a deed restriction? Because that, I believe, is the only way to make sure that anything actually happens without litigation after closing.
I would defer to our legal counsel on the form that we've utilized before with Moro Hall.
We're getting beyond the scope again here.
Well, it, it all, if we're going to agree to the zoning and everyone wants to see it remain recreational and other things could happen or it's not protected in the future, I think that's pertinent. I think that's part of what, why people would vote yes or no on this.
You're asking if there's a deed restriction on the property?
I'm asking, is a post-closing agreement as strong as a deed restriction in this case?
No, it is not, but even a deed restriction is only good for a certain amount of time unless it's something that's required in the permitting. Permitting restriction would be perpetual, but a deed restriction lapses after 20 years. For the property, 20 years.
Okay. And my last question, if it is returned to the town, if they don't end up developing it or, I'm sorry, if they don't end up finishing the project and they return it to the town, and this doesn't apply to the zoning, I guess, but would funds be retained by the town for the delays in being able to sell it?
So I appreciate your comment because it isn't the zoning, but there are ways where you could use escrow, basically drawdown funds where you could have a quasi-penalty clause.
That, that's, I was just making sure there is one, just because we could sell it today, maybe to someone else or next year.
And just to, for everyone in this room's benefit, again, there isn't a purchase and sale for this yet. I'm speaking to what is now a public document, which is one we've used, and that did have exactly that type of thought process of, as a sinking fund and quasi penalties in place if it is sat on, not built and returned.
Thank you, Connor.
Thank you.
And Madam Moderator.
Hi, I'm Christina Reford, 42 Galahad Way. I'm also the chair of the Environmental Stewardship Committee, however, I'm speaking on behalf of myself. Be really quick, I have nothing against soccer, I like this project in theory, but I do find it amazing that we've all learned a lot about PFAS, we've learned about the dangers of artificial turf, and yet here we are, voting to approve a potential project which would be putting down more of it in our town, which we know is dangerous to drink, it's dangerous for our kids to be on, it's just upsetting. Also, I'd like to mention that the, I know people that live on Kennedy Circle, they have tons of problems with flooding and we're going to be taking away grass and trees to put in the backend of this project, which could increase the flooding for all the butters. And so I know a lot has been said about the PFAS, I won't belabor that, but I just cannot believe that we're here again and we're going to be putting down more of this stuff with the artificial turf. That's it.
Go ahead, sir.
George Harrington, 10 Longview Drive. I just want to say I support this article to change the zoning of the, the school's location. And I understand without changing the zoning, the town will have a vacant, aging, decrepit building, which will probably pour a lot into the environment before it's taken care of, that we taxpayers would need to fund to clean it up. The proposed recreational facility will pay for this cleanup. It also adds to taxes being paid, it's an asset to Easton and removes the liability from the town. I've heard, I came here with the impression that we're dealing with a zoning issue and I read all the material on it and it seems like the town council and everybody has put a lot of time and effort into it to make sure that it will be used for recreational purposes. And if it isn't, then it goes back to the town. Then of course it becomes a burden to us. Also, it seems that we've digressed into environmental issues and I can't help but think, being a resident of this town for a considerable amount of time, that I look around and because of, just take solar panels, how many trees did we cut down and added those to the environment and so on? So I think we ought to stick with the zoning issue at this point. It seems like every other discussion will be covered as this rather lengthy, lengthy process takes place. Thank you.
How you doing? Ryan Harrington, 102 Allen Road. I speak in support of this project. I've dragged kids around all these other towns. Be nice to have them be able to play close to home. They, they're going to play somewhere, so why not it be here? Thank you.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Courtney Palm, 151 Randall Street. I am here in support of this project as well. I am a lifelong resident of Easton, I have two children, I work in town, and this project, you know, is just going to improve that property that, you know, sits vacant and, you know, really isn't eyesore at this point. Its location is easily accessible, it's centrally located for our neighbors, and honestly, this facility will bring great recreation, community, and economic benefits to the town and our residents.
Thank you.
Phil Doniu, 45 Forest Edge Road. Disinformation, OA won in overtime tonight, enter the state finals. So I am in support of this project. It, it will be a $20 million project, which will generate annually $360,000, approximately a real estate. As we heard earlier today, the town is struggling financially, they have a revenue problem, they have an expense problem. This will help us in the revenue side and that is very important. It will drive jobs to our town, it will have an economic trail to our businesses, restaurants, and the like as well. Fully supportive of that. I ask you to vote for it.
Mr. Clifton?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Dave Clifton, 4 Lamp Light Lane, here in Southeaston. I certainly support the concept of using that center school site and location for a recreation athletic facility. I say that as a retired parks and recreation person who worked in a community for 40 years, how important a facility like that is in a community like Easton. Madam Moderator, I call for the question.
Okay, we need a second and we need to vote on it. Okay, we need a two-thirds vote to call the question before the question is actually heard. We need a two-thirds vote, all of those in favor of calling the question, please raise your orange cards. And all those opposed, want to keep talking, please raise your orange cards. All right, question is called, it passes by two-thirds majority vote, so now we vote on Article Number Seven. Article Number Seven requires a two-thirds majority vote in order to pass. All those in favor of Article Seven, the zoning article passing, please raise those orange cards. All of those opposed, please raise your orange cards and Article Seven passes by two-thirds majority. Article Eight.
I moved at the town vote pursuant to MGL Chapter 48 to amend sections of the zoning bylaw. The town of Easton adopted a town meeting March 27th, 1973, and amended through May 20th, 2024 to allow small to medium scale ground mounted solar energy systems as an accessory use and structure as printed in the supplement titled Zoning Amendment Section 25. By way of explanation, allowing small to mid-scale solar energy systems that generate more electric power than the amount needed for the average residential or commercial use will provide additional supply that can be redirected to the electrical grid at large, in turn helping to decrease the use of fossil fuel energy generators and is consistent with the town's intent to reduce its overall carbon emissions. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Planning and zoning board recommendation. Getting smart with the microphone.
The Planning and Zoning Board met on October 8th, 2024 and voted for OA.
and voted 4-0 in favor to recommend Article 8.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Number 8? Okay, seeing none. We need a two-thirds majority vote in order for Article 8 to pass. All those in favor of Article 8, please raise your orange cards. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange cards. And Article 8 passes by two-thirds majority. Article 9.
I move that the town vote pursuant to MGL Chapter 48 to amend the section of the zoning bylaw of the town of Easton adopted at town meeting March 27, 1973, and amended through May 20, 2024, remove restrictions on the interior area of residential units as printed in the supplement titled "Zoning Amendment Section 235." By way of explanation, this amendment removes restrictions on interior areas of the residential units to comply with MGL Chapter 48, which disallows zoning regulation or restrictions on the interior area of single-family residential buildings and is consistent with other sections of the zoning bylaw regulating single-family residential development. It does not change density or dimensional standards in the zone. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Planning and zoning board recommendation.
The Planning and Zoning Board voted on October 8, 2024 in favor of recommending this amendment, 4-0.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Number 9? Seeing none, Article 9 requires a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor of Article 9, please raise those orange cards. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange cards. And Article 9 passes by two-thirds majority. Article 10.
I move that the town vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, to amend sections of the zoning bylaw of the town of Easton adopted at town meeting March 27, 1973, and amended through May 20, 2024 by amending the provisions regulating the development of accessory dwelling units consistent with state law as printed in the supplement titled "Zoning Amendment Section 235." By way of explanation, in a continuing effort to increase the affordability of housing in Massachusetts, the Commonwealth adopted legislation in August 2024 allowing accessory dwelling units to be built by right. Easton zoning already allows accessory dwelling units as in-law apartments by right in the residential district, where the accessory dwelling unit is a maximum of 25% of the gross living area or 900 square feet of the primary dwelling unit, whichever is less. State law now requires accessory dwelling units be allowed to be built by right when the accessory dwelling unit is a maximum 50% of the gross living area or 900 square feet, whichever is less. The state law does not require owner occupancy of the ADU or primary dwelling, or that the ADU be attached to the primary dwelling. This amendment aligns Easton zoning bylaw with the state law, which goes into effect February 2025. This amendment does not change existing required setbacks in a residential zone, nor does it change that any contemplated ADU must comply with Title V and all other applicable code and land use regulations. Accessory dwelling units are already an important and popular housing type in Easton. Accessory dwelling units allow seniors to stay in their homes as they age and provide housing for younger adults as well as others seeking affordable and starter housing. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Planning and zoning board.
Planning and zoning board met on October 8, 2024, and voted 4-0 in favor to recommend Article 10.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 10?
Phil Doniu, 45 Forest Edge Road. So I understand the law has passed. However, the regulations are still pending. The law, I believe, goes into effect February 5. However, there's still ambiguity with the specs of regulations. And I think that you, as the Chair, had mentioned that in recent meetings. So, so a question, and I've seen other towns implement this here. Are there gonna be any restrictions on the sale of these ADUs to third parties? And two, are there gonna be any restrictions on short-term rentals such as burbo or otherwise as it relates to these ADUs?
Well, three comments. The first is that I don't, I don't believe that there is any ambiguity in the state law, which is in effect. What I think you may be referring to is that I was hoping that they would have a model bylaw for us by now, and we don't have that. That being said, it is the law, and it overrides our current bylaws. So whatever we do here tonight, this is really just housekeeping for purposes of clarity. The state law actually allows these ADUs. And there's really only, as Jamie was saying, there's really only sort of modest changes from what we have already. The square footage size is not an appreciable difference because it's maxed out at 900 square feet. We still have that, we already had that. The only two real significant changes is we had previously required a familial relationship between the in-law apartment and the primary dweller. That is no longer allowed by state law. And previously, we had required that it be attached. Now, it's allowed to be detached.
Okay, but for example, I've seen NADAC has passed a recent update to their ADU regulations, and they restrict the sale of the ADU as a separate condo unit. So I wonder if that was discussed and considered, and how you concluded on that one. The second one, as relates to the use of an ADU to be built, to use that for short-term rental, like less than 30 days. How does that fit within our current regulations?
So again, we have not addressed that yet. That is certainly something that could be addressed in a separate zoning article. This, we see, is really just a housekeeping matter. Again, the state law says what it says, and it supersedes our bylaws. And really, all we're trying to accomplish here today is to just make it known what the state law is. So there's not, you know, a lack of clarity when someone who's interested in an ADU looks at the state law, sees one thing, looks at our bylaws and sees another. That's really all we're, it's really a housekeeping issue.
Okay, so then someone in theory could build the ADU right now under our existing regulations, if we pass this here, and sell it as a separate condo unit. Is that correct?
Well, someone, someone might be able to do that as a matter of state law, regardless of what we do here tonight.
But to be fair, for example, NADAC has passed regulations that restrict the ability to do so. So I'm asking, should we consider that, one? And then also, how does this impact our short-term rental regulations? And does this allow them to also use these ADUs as short-term rentals as well?
So it does not allow short-term rentals. The change addresses that, so that they cannot be short-term rentals.
So someone who has an illegal apartment right now, they're not gonna be grandfathered as a result of this zoning change?
An apartment is different than an accessory dwelling.
No, meaning they have a rental, illegal rental unit in their property. Is this now gonna make that rental unit, which is currently illegal, legal?
No, no. An apartment is not an accessory dwelling.
Okay. Thank you.
Erin Waluka, 31 Rear Pecanicate. One very quick question. If I'm reading this correctly, and I've read it a few times, it looks like the, this proposal is reducing the maximum square footage from the state's 50% to a maximum of 25%. Am I reading that correctly?
No, it's currently 25%. It's going up to what the state requires, which is 50% or 900 square feet, whichever is less.
So our current regulation is 25%?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't reducing the state.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 10? Okay, seeing none, Article 10 requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor of Article 10, please raise your orange cards. And all those opposed, please raise your orange cards. And Article 10 passes by simple majority. Article 11.
I move that the town vote to amend Section 200 Stormwater Management of the Code of the Town of Easton adopted at town meeting May 17, 2021, as printed in the supplement titled "Town of Easton General Code Amendment Section 200 Stormwater Management." Here's an abbreviated explanation to what's in your handout. The amendment brings the town's stormwater management bylaw into full compliance with the requirements of the 2016 National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Systems, or NPDES, general permit for stormwater sewer systems in Massachusetts, as more fully explained in your warrant and supplement. This article does not add additional permitting requirements nor change the existing permitting requirements for construction projects that meet the standard for stormwater management compliance. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 11? Okay, seeing none. Article 11 requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor of Article 11, please raise your orange card. And all those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article 11 passes by simple majority. Article 12.
I move that the town vote to accept acquire-by-gift, purchase, take-by- eminent domain, or otherwise acquire Victory Lane as a public way and any, appurtenance easements thereto, and authorize the Select Board to take any and all actions related thereto, all as printed in the warrant. By way of explanation, Victory Lane is a 50-foot-wide right-of-way providing access to six developed residential lots in the Victory Estates subdivision, approved by the Planning and Zoning Board on April 30, 2012, with the expectation the road, Victory Lane, would be accepted by the town upon completion. The road is completed by the town after the developer defaulted on its obligation to do so, and the road is now ready for acceptance by the town. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
And one more, Planning and Zoning Board. Caught you off-guard. Sorry.
Wasn't on my pre-printed sheet. I think this was, Stephanie? So do we need it?
It's not necessary, even though it's on the, it's in the law.
So we did vote to recommend.
Yes. You did. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Hi, Kathleen Green, 5 Mary Diehl Lane. I just have a question. The developer of Victory Lane that defaulted, are they still building in town? Who was the developer? And how do they know?
I, the developer was a fellow named Dmitry Deek, and I don't know that he's doing any other development in town.
Okay. So, very much so, I am glad that the town has finished the road, and I would love to move this question. I just would hate to see that a developer is not finishing the projects the way they're supposed to.
Any other questions?
So just, um...
Go ahead, go ahead, Stephanie.
To follow up on your concern about developers and the process...
Do you want me to explain?
The bond process. So when a project subdivision is approved by the Planning and Zoning Board, before lots, one of the next steps immediately after that approval and the decisions issued is that the lots are encumbered, and they can't be released for sale until one of two things happens. The road gets completed and all the utilities are installed, or they deposit some form of surety with the town. And that's why in this instance, when the developer did default, we were able to take that surety and complete the road. So that is a standard process, required process as part of subdivision approvals.
Any other questions, comments?
Michael Kelly, 35 Bay Road. I actually abut this property. I didn't know this was on the agenda. But back in 2012, when this project was approved, I had requested to see if the developer could put a streetlight there, and that never happened. Is that just, I missed meetings, couldn't get that...
When, I'm not sure who you requested that of. We completed the road, as I understand it, as it was designed. And if, I don't know if a streetlight, I was not the planning director at the time.
2012 is a long time ago.
Yeah. So I don't know about the streetlight.
Bernie, wait, I can find out about it?
I can look into it.
Okay.
And look and see if it was on the plan.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 12? Okay, seeing none. Article 12 requires a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, please raise those orange cards. And all those opposed, please raise your orange cards.